All right. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. It is time to call our regularly scheduled board meeting to order. Great to see everyone. First time I've seen most of you this year. So that is a great thing. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to look at the agenda. Crystal did send that out earlier in the week, and we also have a copy here in front of us. Would I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second? All right. It's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the agenda. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add master plan under subcommittee updates.
Any other discussion? All right. It's been moved and properly seconded that we would accept the agenda as printed with the addition of master plan under subcommittee updates. Any dis- well, we've already discussed. All those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Say no. Okay, eyes have it. With that, that will take us to our minutes. We do have a copy of the minutes from the December board meeting in front of us, and Crystal did distribute these earlier during the week. So we'll give an opportunity to review those now, but we would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the December fourteenth meeting. Can I move that we approved the minutes from the December fourteenth?
My second.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the minutes from the December fourteenth board meeting. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Say no. Okay, the eyes have it. That brings us to our treasurer's report. Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
I moved the board to prove that December two thousand twenty-three operating bills totaling three hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred four dollars and eighteen cents.
Is there a second? Second. All right. It's been moved and properly seconded that we would approve the operating bills in the amount of three hundred ninety-three dollars. Three hundred ninety-three, three hundred four dollars and eighteen cents. Any discussion?
Quick question. ADP appears so many times. Is that in one of our programs or is that?
Well, we had to pay the contract out, so I don't know which. So we're done with ADP, so that's. So there's usually two on there. Is there three on there right now? Yeah.
For two pay periods.
Yeah, two pay periods.
And who is going with them?
Pay lasting.
Pay last.
Okay, good question. But I do think if I understood correctly, the payout with the new contract and new vendor, we're still saving money.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
And any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oh, wait. Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
I moved to receive and file the December two thousand twenty-three financial reports.
It's been moved and seconded that we would receive and file the financial reports from December. Any discussion? Yes. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, Kathy, any other items for the treasurer's report for the finance committee?
Um, no.
All right. Thank you very much. That will bring us to our friends of the library report. Stacy, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Randy. So speaking of finances, we have not told the donations in December, but we're closing out the year with about twenty-five thousand in book sales and possibly about seventy-five thousand in member donations, which is, I don't remember if it's a high, but it's approaching the highs of the pre-great recession period, which we're very grateful and thankful for. And we have committed a hundred and eighteen thousand as a round number to the library for various programs over the course of the year. And I, historically, the library has not used all of the committed money, so I'm fairly sure that we'll do that as well, but they're learning how to use it a lot.
No, same here. I feel like we went way over last year. And that's because they would hit you as you walked by and say, hey, will you pay for this? And you would say yes?
So I'm letting it in.
Okay.
Much like everybody should probably burn through their materials budget before they start sending the choice donations, you use the budget that has been given to you and then come back and ask.
Right, right. You just have to learn to say no.
Although, I mean, it was hard to say no to Jenny when she asked for the new shop for the teams for various activities and, you know. And it's hard to say no to Sherri Vaughn always. Besides, she raises money through all the grants. Why would I say no to her? So we're really happy about that. Thanks to Gillian and Crystal and Rebecca and who else is on the offer event for October? You were telling me. But yeah, but they're, they've done the majority of the lighting work. We're going to have Wade Rouse, who writes and deal a shipment, come in and October twenty-first, I believe, that's National Friends of Libraries Week. And then we'll probably have a book sale to cap it off. Sorry, I wasn't here in December. My youngest disease doctor brought in COVID, and I couldn't even get up off the couch to make a Zoom meeting that day. So, um, I think I neglected to tell you that, that I can't remember this point, that we're going to move the book sale from the auditorium back down to the browsing room. It was just way too much work. We weren't getting like the, oh, what's that Wi-Fi kind of sales that drove I think an all-time high of forty-five hundred last May. And I, you know, I looked around, I thought, oh my God, everybody smashed into here and had to move things around. But I think it's kind of like, it creates a sense of closeness and all-togetherness as well. So you know what? They'll try and buy a few books off the shelves, and we'll have to say, no, no, these are not for sale. So we've got, we've got some, we've got some the gala on tap that's being planned for the first Friday in June. I think it's the second. Don't put me on that. And I'm sure that there will be more things as we go along. But just wanted to say that should Mr. Han show up, the board members have heard about his desire to have the biggest library bus that could possibly be created.
The Friends Board.
The Friends.
They've heard about this. And I just want to remind you all that we do have an endowment that is doing just as good as the stock market's doing. So if you could rein him in, we could perfect something. It's got quite the biggest bus in the entire view of the world. Just putting it out there that Travis City has a very nice little, like, band that is quite nice.
Yeah, I think we're looking for your assistance there, Stacy, along with the Friends Board assistance to help wrangle Mr. Han to a good position of compromise that we can all be happy with. But I think that, uh, I, I'm glad that they're excited about it. Sounds like they're excited about his plans.
Well, I mean, they think it's a good idea, but there probably needs to be a strategy.
Well, and I think that is what he has.
But I keep, we have a meeting on Tuesday.
He advised me that he wanted to have a serious planning discussion around it and kind of go from there. So I think he's meeting with the staff. And, you know, I'm always in favor of proposals that kind of come from the staff. And so, because then they've got buy-in and they understand and know best how to program that. So I look forward to the outcome of that discussion, Kelly.
Sorry, Stacey, who did you say was coming in October?
Wade Rouse, R O V S E. He raises deal a shipment.
That's what threw me. I didn't know. Okay. Me too, but I thought that was two different people.
Yeah, it lives over like in, yeah, along the lake, one of them vacation towns. I can't remember what it is. Like Grand Haven, some Sagatuck, maybe something like that.
And, and hopefully we'll have some more fun, interesting news coming up next month as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate it. All right, that will take us to our director's report. So Kelly, I will turn it over to you.
Oh, yeah. Okay. No, I didn't have agenda. That's all. I was just, okay. Um, yes. So just a little update on the Public Library Association conference. Five people now have actually gotten scholarships to attend. So it's pretty much covered by either the Library Michigan or Sandy Herman received the Public Library Association scholarship to attend because it was her first time attending, and she's a relatively new librarian. Um, so the Sabo Life Stations, I have to tell you, surprisingly, well, or maybe not, those things are empty quite a bit. Those Narcan? Oh, yes. It's amazing. Like, they fill it every Thursday. I think on Wednesday it was like empty or pretty much empty.
Or people, people are just taking and they're not using.
Oh, gosh, no. Yeah, they're just for people to take. Just, yeah.
And they're outside too.
They're outside. Yeah.
I definitely noticed.
So they can take it and keep it at home?
Yes. Right. Oh, good for you.
But it speaks to the need, you know, I had a community member ask me, the question was kind of like, why are these everywhere, you know? And then you just have to bring a little bit of awareness to kind of where we are with that particular societal problem, right? But, but I'm not totally surprised to hear that.
Right? So, yeah. And surprisingly, no one's said anything. Why do you have them here either? They haven't questioned it. So so I talked about the new staff that have come, but I also want to tell you that we had a retirement. Jill O'Hara retired after fifteen years. Yes. So she, her last day was January eighth, and she was in her library alone. So we are figuring out how that, where that department fits. It's actually a function of circulation. And so we're still deciding that. We're going to go visit other libraries to see how they do their ILL, because I know there's other libraries that have it under the circ department. So we, it'll be a little bit before we figure that out. Oh, we received a letter from the Goodfellows for collecting for them over the summer or over the holidays. We collected food and new books for children and hats, gloves, and scarves for neighborhood house. On January eighteenth, Farmington Public Schools will be here at seven thirty AM. It's their administra- are you in that, the administrative team? Oh, no. Their leadership team will be here for their quarterly, annual, monthly, I don't know what it is, meeting. Okay, seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
Oh, the cabinet.
Yes, okay. Everybody, it's everybody.
Yeah. Okay, so they'll be here at seven thirty in the morning, and they've offered us a chance to speak to them and give a short overview at at that time. So that's what we will be doing.
Maybe in the auditorium.
Yeah. Yeah. So I still haven't, I'm still deciding on the twenty-four-seven outdoor lockers. I'm still gathering information. Every time I think I have it settled or we have it settled, something new comes to light, and then I have to go back. Now we're in the decision-making. We're actually contacting libraries to figure out how the workflow goes. And the one that we thought we wanted was not, the workflow was like ridiculous. And so we've kind of gone back to square one. And so I'm hoping to bring something to you in February with, okay, this is what I want. This is how much it's going to cost. Because I think it was a twelve-week time period, you know, you wouldn't even get this stuff for twelve weeks. So we want it this fiscal year. We need to get it situated.
Where would those be located?
Oh, the front entrance, by the front entrance.
Outside. Along the walkway?
Or up towards the side. So you know, the overhang?
Yeah.
So actually, you know where Bev's painting is? Kind of right there. So her, she might have to be moved, but.
But if you wanted to put more in, you could wrap it around.
Yes, 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 yes. With the millage, I did update the dates for the timeline since we've decided to go in November. We don't need any, we just have to fill out the petition to the county clerk by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we have some time to figure it out. I did con Stacy into being the secretary yesterday, no, Tuesday night, and she agreed. So we have a secretary and we have a president still looking for a treasurer, which we have to nail that down. But I think we have time. So I figure February, March, and April can be discussion of what's the actual what you're gonna, language is gonna be. You're gonna go for the renewal, or you're gonna go for a renewal and the increase, and then that kind of stuff. And then we have until July. It looks like absentee ballots go out towards the end of September. So you just have to have your publicity July, by June, July, August, for those people that get in September.
So I haven't read all of that, but we have to have it into the clerk, but then does that also have to go into the county?
Do we send it? We send it to either the local clerk or the Oakland County. You can do either one. When I talked to Pam Smith, she said just send it to Oakland County. So and then they distribute it to the local clerks. And then the actual ballot language has to be the August thirteenth. So.
And, and who helps us with the publicity, like flyers that you might want to make or is there, do we use outside helper to help how to focus the campaign?
We can, but we haven't. So Sarah can only create things that give you facts. If you want anything that folks, yes, the committee has to figure out who's going to market them.
And so with that in mind, while Kelly outlined that timeline, I do have an ask to the net who's going to service the president, Stacy, and the other staff members on the committee so that we can kind of gather maybe in February to talk about the actual marketing plan for the activity.
And a budget.
And a budget.
And when was the last millage in place? What year?
It's been.
Well, this is the end of a twenty-year millage, but the last millage we went for was two thousand and eleven.
And eleven. So is anyone left who worked on that around now? I'm just curious. Some experience?
Yeah, you didn't work on it, did you?
Are we going to contact every library for any help before we just go to?
I think that depends on what the committee decides. That's a committee decision. Once you get a status. And then I just wanted to tell you about a police incident that we had. Well, we didn't have a police incident. We had an incident last week where on Thursday, a page, no, was it Thursday? Thursday night, a patron wouldn't leave the Farmington, downtown Farmington, location at closing time. And when she was spoken to several times, she just kind of ignored everybody. So their only option was to call the police. And so they came over and they escorted her out, and they even had difficulty removing her. And then she came back on Saturday night?
Yes.
Here and did the same thing. And so police had to be called again, and they kind of escorted her out. So she's been suspended for thirty days until she, in order to come back in, she has to come talk to one of the administrative staff. So that's where we're at with them.
Is there any reason given or motivational? This wasn't like looking for wants kind of a situation.
It's possible, but she's not, she's not speaking. She's not communicating.
I was gonna say, Renee, that's kind of the first thought that came to my mind is this is an house person, but and clearly there may be some mental issues going on there. You know, I think about right now, you know, calling our local public safety officers is about all we can do. I do think it might be worthwhile just to have a conversation perhaps with both of our chiefs with this situation in mind to understand their approaches to this type of a situation. Like, are there other resources they could potentially engage so that we could get communication with this person? Because clearly, she's probably going to be back to the library, and you might encounter this again. So that would be my suggestion.
I feel like Farmington might have been a little bit more understanding than Farmington.
It sounded like from the report that it sounded like that some of the people recognized her from some other place, and they're like, we can drop her off where she needs to go. But they also said the problem is, is there's no place around here that's a shelter. You know, that's, that's part of the problem.
Yeah, I believe it. I've, I've, I've heard from, I think I talked to you about the Oakland County Homelessness Task Force. They've been in touch with me about like how we help serve that community. And I've heard from the staff committee here about the need, like we do interface with them. So I think it's worth exploring.
Yeah.
I'd like to just add that this person, we did get a name, and this person does have a library part with us. So we are going to be, the police were unable to give her the, you have a letter that states, you know, you've been suspended for thirty days. You can return after you've had meeting with the administration. The staff and the police were not able to physically give her this letter, so we are going to be mailing it to the address we have on file. Of course, we don't know if this person still lives at that address. But staff are aware of the situation, and if the person comes in, staff, do you have a copy of the letter that they can issue her before they ask for?
Yeah, I totally understand. And, you know, we have to have procedures in place to handle these kind of things. But, you know, this is a borderline situation in my view that could easily go a little bit left, right? If handling is not just.
This is, this is true. It's, you're left with no recourse at nine thirty at night when somebody refuses to leave.
So I think just some more thought around it. I'll definitely be thinking about it too.
Yeah.
Could we ask the chief to come to a meeting and talk about basically safety with the public and that kind of situation where you have to handle someone who maybe has dementia, maybe not. But they, you know, and what resources do they try to use when it, would they just take the lady and did they drop her off at her house since we had her address or?
She had a car. Did she not? Yes.
It sounded like on Thursday she did not, but on Saturday she did.
And one of the things I'd also like to note is the required staff training this year is Ryan Dowd, who does trainings on how to deal with situations like this with patrons that may be experiencing homelessness or addiction or a mental health crisis. So our staff are receiving training this year specifically to address those matters. And in the past, staff have attended trainings on this topic. So I don't think our staff is completely uneducated on how to approach these situations. But we could definitely learn more from our local police you know, units about how they specifically handle that so that we know what their process is.
And there may be some opportunity for alignment together around, well, what is the best practice in these situations if there's any input to offer, right? So.
I would say it sounded like the staff who were involved in it handled it really well and asked, you know, trying to get her to elicit things like, is there going to be a phone call for you? Can we do this? And they never got any response.
Yeah, it's pretty tough. I wouldn't.
They waited, they waited a while before they said, we're gonna, and they gave her a warning. We're gonna have to call the police if you don't.
Yeah, at some point you have to close the building, so.
So the, the staff did handle it really well and gave her notice that, that, you know, if you're not gonna get their things and leave, we are gonna have to call them. So she is given opportunities. They, you know, offer to call. They, I think the staff handled it really well.
Did she react to any of the things they were saying? Do you think she was dead?
Well, no, on Saturday, when the police came and they said, you know, unfortunately, we may have to take you to jail if you don't leave. She said, you people never helped me. And so I don't think, based on that, I'm not sure she was looking for shelter, because I've worked at Ann Arbor District Library downtown where there is significant homeless population and did experience in the past where people have purposely gotten arrested, so they had a place to stay at night. And I feel like if that was her goal, she would have just, she wouldn't have resist, resisted. So I do think there is a mental health component there. We also there were some bodily fluids found on the seat that she was into. So I'm not, yeah. So I think there's a lot going on.
So that's my report. Any have questions?
Well, you derailed it there at the end with that last word.
Would you, I'd like me to follow up with the chief and see if they have suggestions, or maybe he'd like to come and just talk for a few minutes and coordinate ideas? Or it's too premature?
I would say let's let the staff maybe, because we first of all have two chiefs to talk to, right? And maybe let the staff coordinate that. I certainly would welcome them coming to speak with the board about this. We have an upcoming retreat hopefully here in the first quarter. That could be a good time to have that conversation. So maybe let's put it down for a board retreat.
Yeah, I think a conversation with the board would be the most appropriate because it gives us ideas.
And it's more about a tone and tenor of the community type of a situation, right? And it sounds like, Jill, from your feedback, the person felt like she had not previously gotten whatever she needed from them. So I think we all should talk about it a little bit. I'm curious.
Somebody had a question.
It's on a different topic.
Oh, okay. Go ahead. I'm open. Oh, two o'clock. The Jackson House event? Yes, two o'clock. Any other question? Well, go ahead. No, I was gonna introduce Peter, but if you're not ready yet.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So Peter, Peter, I cannot say your last name.
Wayne Sinovich.
Is it on the screen?
No. No, it's not. It's, it's got, well, it's got all kinds of consonants in it that I can't put them together and yeah. But anyway, this is Peter. He's our new facilities manager, and we're so very happy to have him here. He is starting to bring the facilities department into the twenty-first century, which is very nice. Anyway, so I'm gonna give the floor to Peter, and he's gonna talk about himself and whatever else you want to say, and then you can ask him questions.
So, yeah, hi, I'm Peter. My last name is very difficult. You cannot try reading and saying it. But feel free to ask me as many times as you want how to say it's okay. So my experience is I had two years of facility management experience. Previous two years I was at a warehouse. I handled two warehouses, a distribution center. So I'm pretty familiar with you know, bigger machinery, but when it comes down to libraries, lighting and all that, all translates. During then, I also got my OSHA ten and thirty certification. So safety is always a big part of like what I've looked at. And then not really related here, so we do have aerial lift. I am a operator trainer for forklift and aerial lifts. So you can always use, use those safely. And then before that, I was in the military for five years. I was an aircraft mechanic. That's where I pretty much learned the bulk of my maintenance experience and then also kind of looking at something like, well, this is not working. How can we figure out how to fix this? And I'm just, I'm excited to be here. I've always loved, you know, being in a library ever since I was a kid, you know, doing these field trips that we've had like the past month. I remember that. You know, doing these field trips that we've had like the past month, I remember that. Um. And then my wife also works at the Romulus Public Library. And so hearing her stories with her interactions with coworkers and patrons and the events they do. It just always, I always wanted to be part of it, and then when I saw this um opportunity come up, I was like, I have to. Have to shoot my chance.
Here's how I work at a library without being a librarian.
So I'm very excited to be here.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for here. You know, couple of people held down before, before you guys.
Yeah, and thanks to you guys for, I guess, being so nimble and flexible and not. Hesitant about kind of taking on that challenge in the interim time, you know, I mean, some folks would have said, oh, we need to hire a third party, somebody, or we need to. You know, but um, I was a little alarmed myself when I got to know they said that. You're like, no, Jill, she's got it handled. Jill, all right, listen to her. All right. Welcome, Peter. Glad to have you. And I'm sure that um, your familiarity with aircraft maintenance probably gives you. Some um advantage with all of these systems that we seem to have here that seem homegrown and, and just kind of put together. All right, great. That will take us to unfinished business. Well, the first item we have in unfinished business is um Michigan class.
Oh, and Bob's not even here.
And in, I guess transparency, the finance committee is myself, Bob and Kathy. So Kathy, maybe uh, I think we probably should have a finance committee meeting.
Yes, we should.
Uh, I know you offered that up for this um week as well, but we'll do that before the next meeting. And come back and give um a final recommendation to the board on Michigan class. I think. We are alive, but I just don't wanna take the action without um having all agreed.
Well, I was waiting, you know, I didn't think we needed a meeting because I thought you and I agreed and I was waiting for Bob to contact me. Texted him and emailed him and never heard back, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get together.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll wrangle in person and decide uh what, what we're gonna recommend to you.
When you send the message, subject line is uh getting the book mobile.
The meeting is about the book mobile and then you just transition and drive, so. Well, yeah, by the way, you have to know that.
By the way, before you enter that one, so someone must believe. So a point about that, I think the presentation, we were all very impressed with it and. We're all very in favor of moving forward with it, so.
Okay, um, that's good.
Well, Bob was the one who didn't hear it, so that.
That is the rub, so let's um, and maybe Kathy then, we can have the representative from Michigan class come and meet with the finance committee. That's what we'll do, and then that way he'll get the benefit of sitting and talking with her, and then we should be all set. And I know she wants us to join, so she'll do that, I'm sure. All right, next up is um defined contribution waiting period, and I know last time this item was. Uh, referred to the personnel committee. Uh, the personnel committee did meet, I believe, and so uh Delara, Renee, either of you wanna give a brief update on kind of where we are there? Or even Kelly, I think all of you were at that meeting. Or Kathy, who was, who wants to give an update?
For day.
We, we did um meet and we um discussed, you know, some several different, different options of um. How we wanted to exactly do the retirement benefit plans. Um, I think there's still some questions that we need to address and, and look at a little bit more closely, and so. Um, I think at this time, we, we're not going to make any decisions and it would be nice to, to meet again, I think.
So personnel committee's still discussing, um, and we'll look forward to a recommendation from personnel uh shortly.
I think, uh, would it be safe to say we have overall consensus on like the big parts of it? There are some details in operationalizing it for, that we need to.
Right.
Discuss.
Okay, all right, excellent. Um, I wasn't there and I tend to find that they get more done without me, so. I'm, I'm sure it's in good hands. All right, that will take us to subcommittee updates. Do we have any subcommittee updates tonight? Oh, yes, we have an update from the master plan committee, Kathy.
Okay, um, on January eighth, the group met with Merritt. C Slack Design, which I'll refer to from now on as MCD. The reps were Steve Schneeman and the interior designer Diane.
Sure.
Sure. I always wanna say Schwab. They presented the second draft. Now, you see, I posted the first draft um a while back. Now they, and I was hoping that they would send me what the draft, so that I could have them enlarged and post them again. Um, but that didn't happen. So they presented the second draft of the master plan to upgrade both branches of that seal. There is much uh discussion by those present on how the draft drawings met with their approval and what they'd like changed. These changes will be incorporated into the next draft along with a more detailed vision of where things might be placed in the different areas. There was more, there may be more iterations before the final draft is presented. The final draft will contain a suggested timeline and the cost for each part of the project. And keeping in mind that cost will probably be higher in the coming years, and they're thinking that this master plan could be a ten-year project. This is a lot of stuff. Now, obviously, it's gonna have to come before the board and um. We'll have the final say on all of that, and I'm hoping that we'll be studying it before we say air.
Yeah, I would imagine we'll probably need some study session and discussion time uh once that work product arrives, so. Thank you for keeping us in.
They're looking at doing it in uh like a multi-phase uh steps, right? Yeah.
You don't wanna share any of the cool ideas?
So.
Besides the slide.
So we've already had the, they got community feedback, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to. I mean, it's, just promote that, like, like, let people know that we're working on this at, at the same time that we're trying to get people. Thinking about voting for the village, because obviously, the military renewal would impact the master plan.
And so, you know, I agree with you, uh Jim, and, and. That was, you know, when we had the question about would we do another public survey? And I think we said, no, we won't do another survey because we didn't feel like there would be material difference in the responses. But one of the things we did talk about is how do we keep the public engaged as we go through the next leg of this?
Right.
Now, to Kelly and staff's credit, right, they've already set up a, a town hall, so to speak, first one we've done, right? Um, where staff and I gave some comments, but staff did most of that presentation around kind of. What we did last year and kind of a, an update. Um, I, it wasn't that well attended, just to be transparent. Um, but I would encourage us maybe, and maybe the committee can figure out ways to have, have a venue. Whether it's a, a kind of talking session or whatever. We kind of heard also, I'll give you an update, we met with the president of Koha last Monday, and so I'll give you some updates from that meeting. Uh, but I think it would be worthwhile maybe even taking it there, or you know, just some other venues.
I wonder if you're doing like a town hall on the master plan?
I think that makes sense to me.
Even that, or even a few minutes with the, the Armington cabinet, you know, when they come. Any, anybody that we get in front of. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I like that idea. Um, so Kelly, what do you think? I mean, I, I think the committee can figure out. And maybe we can put together um a list of like the audiences, the partners, we wanna make sure we get input from. And how and when we do that.
Yeah.
Well, I do think it's important that you coordinate the ask for the village. And people are gonna say, well, what's the money for? And they'll say, but I've heard this master plan town meeting. And I didn't like what I heard, so I'm not gonna, you know, I'm just, it's gotta be coordinated with what people are hearing from the planning. And then are they going to vote? So it, yeah, that's a pretty important dynamic.
And so I agree with you. Um, and maybe I'll talk about the Koha meeting now, if that might make. So, you know, that it. We know this year is a big communication year for us, right, to touch all the various audiences that we've got out there. Um, Kathy, to her credit, had been kind of nudging me to um. Make some entree into uh the Koha organization to talk about the library. Uh, and they've been trying to stand themselves back up and, and get that organization reinvigorated. And really like operating at full strength in the community too, right? So they have a relatively new president and he's been. Getting things going. I mean, he's had the superintendent there, he's had um several various uh entities come through those meetings. So we met with him last Monday, um, and he's gonna have us on the agenda in uh the spring.
May. Did he, did you get that email?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So we are confirmed, right? So we're gonna go and speak to the Koha, and then in between now and then. Uh, I'll probably enlist some of you guys to help. Maybe we can get to various association meetings and stuff and get more messaging out. But one of the things that he brought to our attention, Sharon, um, is that his perception. Of the library and what was going on with the library was literally like during COVID. His, his, so you know how we talk about like something happens and then you move from that place in time, right? And we've been doing a lot of work over the past few years, but his actual frame of reference was all the way back there. So we spent a little time bringing him up to speed of like, well, what caused that? There was some confusion around what happened. Why were services shut down and all of this? So there's a degree of um, I think closing some of the story gap for some people. I can't speak to like how many people aren't quite up to speed on where we are. But it definitely brought to my attention that like, even though we've been doing such wonderful work and the rebuilding has been laborious, but I think. Fruitful, a lot of people aren't aware of like what has happened since then. So we do need to work with Sarah really carefully to craft the messaging, the messages and coordinate all of this. But we do have to figure out how to catch people up in a way, like, you know, um, and then. How to demonstrate the value for the millage.
Messaging is critical.
Yeah.
And a lot of things people remember as, oh yeah, I remember the library. They have a lot of trouble, all the problems that trustee stuff and everything. That's what people remember.
Well, that's pretty much where he was, and that's.
That's what they remember. I, I attend COVID usually, that, that group Koha, and um, that's what people think.
And so we have to um get people up to speed, and that's why I don't wanna just show up to the meeting in the spring. I want to do some messaging between now and then to try to help bring the message, bring people up to speed. So that it's not such a heavy lift when we get there, but that was definitely our takeaway from the meeting, and it was eye-opening. For me anyway, to having had that meeting, um, because we're inside, we're in this every day doing it. Um, so he brought some, some insights and awareness to my vision for sure.
I wonder if we do like, um, you know how when the cities have a master plan and they invite the public in to give an opinion?
Yeah.
And they have it posted all around the auditorium, and you have a little sticky notes. I've been to so many of those, you know.
I was going to ask if you, if that was part of putting the plan together.
No. No, I mean, it wasn't their plan. It's, it's something we could do before you go to final draft.
Well.
Or final product.
For my taste, I think it's necessary, and I think we need to, again, to Sharon's point, be very coordinated in the messaging, um. But, but I think so.
Yeah.
I think so, because there's too much disconnect between where we were then and what was going on and like where we are now that the blanks.
But remember, when we, when we did it, when we, uh, how do I say this? When it, when we first asked MCD to start working on a, it wasn't the master plan at first, and, and, and we were working on the strategic plan. And then we, and then we asked MCD to continue on with the master plan, so. Like, they were gonna coordinate with that, but yes, I would hope that. Now that they're working on our master plan, I would hope that getting feedback from the community or in the sense you're talking about the dots, um, or something. I would hope they would, they would help us with that.
I mean, I think it should come to you first, before you take it to the public. It has to go to the board first so that you can see what it looks like.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and that, and then you take it to the public.
Because we haven't really seen.
No, you haven't. So, right, right. I mean, there's a lot on there. Right.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, there's additions, there's um, an amphitheater, amphitheater at the Liberty Street location. And an outdoor story space and a uh, a seating space for the public to sit. Um, and uh more staff space, um. Uh, a redesigned, for Farmington redesigned entrance on both sides of the building that are ADA compliant. Um. At Farmington, I would think the bathrooms were.
Update our bathroom.
Yeah, I don't think, for, for this one, this one was like. None of the bathrooms here are ADA compliant, so it's actually moving bathrooms to a, a different location to make them. Right, which is not, right, um, cutting out a wall, like, right? So like the, when you first walk in, you have the wall with the mime and the um. The plaques, the donor wall and whatever, they're gonna, they wanna. Angle that wall, so you have a direct line to the children's department and open that up. And then the stairwell is actually from that side, not the other side, you don't have to walk all the way around, and then a slide for the kids to go down. This is what Kathy about died over, but.
I'm thinking about the liability.
It's no more.
It's just like the slide at Bell Out on the fly home.
It's no more liability in the treehouse at Farmington, like, yeah, right.
So we can inspect the treehouse.
Yeah, so, um, so it was moving um, a bunch of walls out, so it's not as enclosed. And more quiet study spaces, um, oh, uh, so, let's see, where are we? I always forget where, so that front. Uh, to excavate the ground to allow a walkout space for the children's. Area for a programming space so that they actually, and it would be all glass, so they actually have natural light down there, where they don't have any natural light down there. Um, and then, you know, giving them a, a programming room and then having um. An outdoor programming space here, which is be over on that side, and then a nature park, and then. Different, to your point about the parking lot, you would have actual different um. Textures in the pavement that would be a walking, that would take you to a sidewalk and you could cross safely instead of being in front of traffic and.
I love all of that. Um, so with our storytelling though, I think what we've gotta do is kind of. Unfortunately, kind of revisit a moment in time and then paint a picture of rebuild. Restoration, right? And then we can get into, I think, those future plans, but we, we've gotta kind of fill in on. What we dug out of where we are and, and inform some people, like, what happened? Some people are still confused.
What you all have to decide on is what are the main talking points? What are the main talking points we're gonna focus on? That's why I asked you if you had anybody before, like. Like PR person that helped people who have experience and what, what are good talking points for what you're doing, or you just do it all on your own?
And I think that's where um the every library organization comes in. Because they do this all across the country and they will kind of help us craft that method piece.
You need a little, some of the little experience.
Absolutely, um.
You don't wanna run for president without ever having any run in, any other office first.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's part of that meeting, when we meet in early February with the village committee. To really talk about what is the strategy, what's the message, how are we gonna engage every library um and kind of get that plan going? Now, Danette, um, our former president, she's chairing that village committee. Um, and if those of you who know Danette, she will have, she already has ideas because she's already texting me about those all the time. So she's thinking about this already. All right, um, that will take us to new business. Um, and we have an item here, meeting room rental fees. Um, and this came out of our conversation with the Koha president. Um. We really had some conversation around the fact that they used to meet here regularly.
But they don't now because you charted.
And they don't now because. And they don't now because and and it's somewhat um cost prohibitive. Um really, I mean, it's a community-based organization supporting similar mission, uh I would think from a community perspective. So, you know, we had some conversation, Kelly and I had some conversation around. Um you know, honestly, my desire would probably be that we'd be on par with the cities around who can use spaces. Gratis. Um and so the staff is going to look at that and bring a proposal to us around that after they've kind of investigated it a little bit. But based on that conversation, I personally do think we might look at our meeting room policy, just to make sure that they are accessible. And especially available to all these organizations that are trying, just like we are, to help restore and build the fabric of the community. Like, we don't want to put a barrier up. Um to them using a facility. Also, when these groups have those meetings. That's an opportunity for people who might not normally come to the library or whomever, right? Their attendees to traffic our our spaces to. So I think it makes some sense.
Well, the other thing about Koha is they do minutes and all the different homeowner presidents. They go home and they, a lot of them do newsletters and they'll put whatever was heard at the meeting. So it's another way of disseminate. And it used to be whole Koha was very big. They had like thirty people would come, forty people would come. And over the last couple of years, it kind of fell, maybe there'd be twelve people. Um like the next, they always get good speakers, the next speaker is the new mayor. And somebody else. So it is a good resource for, you know, reaching out and saying, maybe even this year might be a good year for. Their their annual meeting or semi-annual meeting to say, why don't you come to the library? Because that's why they go to City Hall, because it's free.
Yep. I think he said the chambers was booked um that particular date. But I think the date that we are gonna speak, uh we would invite them to, that we'd host here, um if they're interested in that. And we definitely. I think we're aligned now um to be in full partnership with Koha after the meeting that we had last Monday.
But the new president is very energetic, but they have their, their meetings have been up and down in terms of people who've come.
Does every homeowners association in Farmington.
They have about thirty-five.
No, and that's one of the things that we talked about when he was here. I think he said there were a hundred and maybe thirty-eight neighborhoods. And I think they have less than forty dues paying neighborhoods. So they're also trying to. Raise the level of engagement from the neighborhood organizations. And that's something I think we can probably.
Like anything else, COVID severely affect their their meeting and people who can't.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so we won't take any action on that, but we just wanted to kind of preview the thought with you guys and let you know that staff will be coming back. To us with some kind of proposal around this to see what makes sense, right? Um so we'll stay tuned for that. Any correspondence?
No.
Okay, any public comment?
Actually, as public members, I'm not really, um here, I I have a question because I have noticed this as I come in and out. By the front to do uh donations. So the circle drive. Can be crowded at times, right? Especially in the evening and and after school and stuff. There is a tendency uh for people I've noticed to leave their vehicles and just leave them there. And sometimes they go through so that they're not blocking and sometimes they don't. Some people double park, it's really been an issue. Then I noticed that they know parking or whatever sign. Is is like way down at the south end of the circle and it leans a little bit, so you can't quite see it. And so nobody. Nobody really sees it. I don't know what you want to do with that, but it can be really perilous to be walking back and forth. Especially as you're crossing to the parking lot just west of the entrance. Um when people are going out, because there's not a lot of regard for. So. It's just more of an attention thing. If it gets redone eventually, I'm sure that would be very helpful. Um. But I I do worry a little bit about it, especially because handicap parking is right there and people who need to have um some time to cross. Are crossing right in the middle of that circle drive toward the end. And I do get a little wiggly about it.
I'm, I have not observed that behavior, but I have a question, what what color is the curb painted there?
That's what I was thinking about.
There's a yellow, there's a yellow crosshatched area, like, I mean, you can fit two compact SUVs in there. Without scraping anybody, I would imagine, side by side. So you can pull in and if you pull in long enough, you can fully be within the crosshatch. Um area, it's yellow, yellow. And then there are yellow crossing areas from the sidewalk. To the parking lot, but the, I don't think the curb is yellow.
I mean, there's no reason to leave your vehicle.
And yet, yesterday morning. Yeah, yesterday morning, somebody had gone in to get her pile books and I got it. I get it, but you know, I look at that and I have, in all the years that I've worked at my institution, I had pulled into the. Circle to drop things off once and that's when I just didn't have the um. The capacity to carry a lot of stuff. You know what I mean? I don't use it as a, as a, oh, I need to. I mean, call and they could bring it out to you, right? And then you never leave it, so.
Well, and I think that is the thing, right? I think that became more prevalent during COVID when we had the drive-up service, which we still have. Right? Um but now at this point, people are just kind of um, I've noticed what you, the situation, I've seen it. Um so I don't think there's any action for us to take here, but I will say, Kelly, maybe you and Peter can talk about it. Think about it from a facilities perspective to see if there are any improvements that we could make. Um I think the curb coloring and any signaling that we can do could help. But um.
Please don't leave the vehicle.
Well, it's, it's just something to think about, because like it wouldn't matter at night, after hours, but if if we have the lockers installed.
Right, right.
And so then that begs the question, is that the right place for lockers? If it's gonna cause people to pull it there and stop. Okay, so that's a good point.
I have a nightmare there.
That's true.
The day, the night that I saw, there were like four cars in there and they were all just, two of them were occupied, two of them weren't. And flashes were on and all this, and I was just like, okay, what's going on? All right. Um if you guys don't mind, I'd like to revisit new business. Uh because I wanted us to have the opportunity to um or entertain a motion uh to officially appoint Dilhara to the Personnel Committee. I think she met with them last week already. Um but if there is a motion out there on the table, uh. I would certainly entertain a motion to uh appoint her to that committee. Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Oh, sorry, Chris. Any discussion? Really, I don't. Any, any discussion?
Would you like to say anything?
I would love to. At the end of the meeting, that's the one I've been to, it's like, this is fun.
So how, how, so how many, how many people then? Careful, careful.
Uh and I was glad to have her capable uh mind there. I didn't need to attend um with the other men, so thank you. Uh all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much and welcome to the committee. Yeah, and thank you for thinking that it's fun. Appreciate that. That is like, yeah, that's awesome. Um but I too am, you know, the people part of it. It's an important part of it and and I have a particular um. Desire to make sure that our people are happy, so glad you guys are are there doing that. All right, I think with that, uh we are at trustee comment. Do we have any trustee comments? Any further comments? All right, seeing none, we will consider ourselves adjourned.